All right, we should be live now.
Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order at six o'clock, six P M. Mrs. DeCarlo, can I please have a roll call?
Mrs. Brooks?
Here.
Mrs. Cordalaro?
Here.
Mrs. Mezic?
Here.
Mrs. Shields?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Thomasini?
Here.
Mrs. Halborg?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was passed to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice and attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the act, the Rockaway Township Board of Education has caused due notice of the date, time, and place of said meeting to be published in the Daily Record Star Legend and on our district website. Does any board member wish to object to the conduct of this meeting for the purpose stated in the public notice? No. Okay, can I please have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
I think it was Erin and Mrs. Cordalaro, and that would be at six oh one.
Are we not waving the flag salute?
Yeah, yes, we should be doing. Well, we're doing that at the end. Do we usually wave it?
We usually wave and then go.
Wave it and then go into close.
Okay, I don't know why I skipped that. Can I please have a motion to waive the pledge?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, show of hands? Okay, all right. I will see you all in executive in a few minutes.
Hello? I'm doing okay. There's an R L Goldstein, is that?
Yeah, that's our attorney.
Okay. He briefly popped in for the public and then left.
This was delicious. Sorry, all I have is a cake fork, the rest of them are the dishwasher.
This is like literally perfect timing, they just went into executive session. So I know I have like a half hour.
Did you have the pork? It's delicious.
Yeah.
But try with the potato salad. It's the absolute perfect complement. I mean, really good. You can choose one of Finn's burgers, plus it's clean, or you can use this towel, but whatever, they all need to be washed, so. Yeah, I'm like, mom scraped off a little bit of the seasoning, some of them were a little bit more spicy than others.
Oh man, that's good.
But I was like, this is awesome.
Mom like that?
Yeah, she scraped off the, yeah, she just didn't eat the spicy parts. But yeah, I mean, I was like, that is a winner. I would totally buy that again and break that out into cheeses. What's matter?
Hi.
I don't think we're open to the public quite yet.
We're already, we're already streaming.
We're streaming.
Larissa was there and ran off and Christie's not.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, everybody's here. Can I have a motion to come out of executive?
Second.
Let it be noted at 7:34. I believe that was Mrs. Shields. And Aaron, can I have a show of hands? Thank you. Okay. Can everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It came on a little quicker than I thought it was gonna come on. Good evening, everybody, and welcome. Very happy, very happy to say that we've concluded the 2019, 2020 and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The Board asks that the members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking, specifically comments regarding students and employees of the Board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the Board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The Board bears no responsibility nor will be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in the comments and be aware they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. May I please have a motion to open to the public?
Currently, there's no one from the public that has responded that they want to speak.
Thank you. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we need to approve the minutes for the May 20th, June 2nd, and June 9th minutes. We're not going to take it as separate a roll calls this evening. Please indicate for all, and if you need to abstain from any, please just indicate when you're called upon to say which, which dates to be exempt from, abstain from.
Can we just note communications first?
I'm sorry. We have several communications. I don't believe we have any further communications than what's listed on the agenda, Mrs. DeCarlo.
Right before the meeting started, there was another one that was sent out by Principal Gennella with links to the eighth grade graduation ceremony and the, yes. Mrs. Codalaro?
Yes.
All three?
Yes. To all.
All three?
No, our, the last board meeting.
That would be, that would be June, June 2nd and June 9th you're being abstaining from?
Correct.
And May 20th is a yes.
So noted. Mrs. Halborg?
Yes to all three. Okay. Onto the next item on the agenda, the first would be the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. ...of the 1920 school year, and this has clearly been one of a, a one of a kind school year. And I would like to take a moment to thank the community. To acknowledge our leaders, teachers, and staff for their exceptional work this school year. By prioritizing the importance of keeping and maintaining personal connections with students and families during this pandemic, our schools truly lived by our core values of heart. On behalf of our entire leadership team, please know how much we appreciate all of your efforts. Typically, on our June board meeting, agenda is the time when we will honor all of our annual retirees with a public presentation. Since we were not able to do that presentation, the, the presentation we're accustomed to this year, we are planning to invite all of the current retirees. Lisa Solomon, 16 years of service. Grace Foster, 17 years of service. Beth Pearson, 30 years of service. Linda Hutchinson, four years of service. Susan Harris, 20 years of service. Karen Renaud, 14 years of service. William Timmer, 20 years of service. Virginia Murphy, 22 years of service. And Wendy Hummel, for 21 years of service. To all of you, we appreciate all of your years of service to our community. Tonight's board agenda also includes some exciting updates to Policy 5410, Promotion and Retention, and Policy 5420, Reporting Pupil Program Progress. The revisions to these policies will allow us to shift to trimester marking periods in grades K through 5 at the start of the 2020-2021 school year. We believe this aligns nicely with the ongoing implementation of our elementary school standards-based report card and improvements we've made to the Genesis Parent Portal to align with our standard-based report card. Speaking of our report cards, if you haven't yet, please enter the parent portal and view your child's final report card. You'll be prompted to take a brief survey with questions about the potential design of school reopening plans for September. Your feedback is super important, so please take a moment to complete these surveys. For families in our community with a child planning to start kindergarten this September, please visit our website for information about registration. I know some families delayed registration due to the pandemic, which I understand. However, the entire process is now virtual, so please act now to properly register your child for kindergarten. In closing, I'd like to acknowledge all of the Copeland teachers and staff who came out for our wave parade, eighth grade graduation last Friday. Their presence made for a very festive experience. Not the experience we all expected we would have when we started the school year, but I believe Principal Gennella and his leadership team did an amazing job.
The gyms, both gyms at Copeland, the one at KDM and DBO are all in the process of being refinished. They're doing well, four of them simultaneously. Ian and Franklin and myself, we participated in a phone conference with the New Jersey DEP yesterday. Our engineers in the process of designing a new water treatment system to address the concerns of the aging treatment equipment we currently have in place at KDM. Once the system is designed, it will be presented to the DEP for approval and the permit process. And at the school office, at the business office, we have begun to close out the finances for the 1920 school year and to roll over to the 2021 school year, and this process usually takes us most of the summer to complete. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. DeCarlo. Onto the curriculum report.
Of the Board and hello Rockaway Township. Work has been completed on the K5 Media and Technology Curriculum recently, and we are very excited to all stakeholders and craft a curriculum that balances the demands of the standards has been incredible. With the addition of balanced literacy and the changes to the elementary schedules to accommodate that shift, our technology standards needed to be addressed in a new way. And this curriculum balances that need as well as incorporating the media skills that our students need going forward. This curriculum also calls for a change in the role of media specialists at each building. This curriculum asks them to become the CIO for their students and their colleagues and to become a hub for the school buildings and all techno, all things technological and informational. We anticipate much to see what they create together for our students. Currently, we are working on four curriculum projects within the district, six through eight media and third grade gap units and K through eight music. Each will continue throughout the summer, and I will keep the community updated on their progress. Additionally, new standards were adopted by the State Board of Education in several areas. Career readiness, career readiness, life literacies and key skills, comprehensive health and physical education, computer science and design thinking, science, social studies, visual and performing arts, and more languages. These standards have varying dates of mandatory adoption, but we will be beginning to plan for any curriculum shifts that need to be made in order to align with these changes. On tonight's agenda, you will also see a motion to adopt a curriculum update for the fourth and fifth grade ELA. During the course of the year, our teachers examined some of the aspects of the curriculum that was written last year for K5 ELA and found they wanted to emphasize certain skills in grades four and five. Levels narrowed their skills down to, down into very specific areas and have created small units to address these skills. Our curriculum for ELA in these grades with the addition of these small units is very rigorous and asks students to analyze text at the appropriate years of our new math series, Ready Math. The sessions were an overview of the program and gave them access to the digital components prior to leaving for the summer. Our aim with providing this training at the end of the year was to make sure we had exposure to the program before our return in September. Teacher manuals were delivered to the schools the week prior to training, and student materials will be ordered shortly. When we return in September, regardless of format, our teachers and students will be immersed in Ready Math. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any board member have any comments or questions regarding the reports? Okay, we will move committee reports. Anyone like to go first?
I, I, I do.
Thank you.
...information, our next joint session is gonna take place this Monday. So that's moving ahead.
Thank you for that.
Welcome.
Um, anyway, the next, Mrs. Smith?
I have some policy information. The policy committee met twice since the last board meeting on May 27th. It was from 3:30 to 5 o'clock via Google Meet. The attendees were Peter, Christie, Aaron, and myself. Guests were Patrick, and we had Kim Willer join us, she's our policy editor. We reviewed, discussed final revisions to Policy 2330, homework that's been a work in progress for a while now. Policy 4321, began looking at these, these all deal with acceptable use of computer networks and computer resources regarding the online distance learning. We also began looking at Policy 3283, Policy 4283. also began looking at policy three-two-eight-three, policy four-two-eight-three, electronic communication between teaching staff members and students, and that again is pertaining to the online learning and some new alert language. We also began to look at policy five-two-zero-zero, attendance in regards to online learning and makeup work. This was referenced in the grading system regulation. We also discussed policy five-five-one-six, use of reviewed a regulation two-six-two-four, grading system. These are all based on standards-based report cards, trimesters, the district initiatives. We additionally reviewed reg five-four-one-zero, promotion and retention, and again, it all is related to the district initiatives. Thirdly, we reviewed regulation five-four-two-zero, reporting pupil progress as it pertains to the district initiatives, also of standards-based report cards and trimesters, and we're reviewing these regulations to ensure that they are logical and complete. We also discussed, been in the works with a standard operating procedure, so we were discussing that, and we're looking to streamline and improve our policy process. We also reviewed some sample policies. Our recommendations from that meeting were to continue reviewing and revising of the homework and online learning policies, and the administration will be working on or continuing to work on the regulations. The policy committee also met on June 10th from 3:00 to 4:30 via Google Meet. The attendees were Peter, Kristi, Aaron, and me. We also continued to review homework. Final revisions were done. District stakeholders are now continuing to review, and they're in the process of providing feedback to the administration. We also worked on the acceptable use of computer networks and computers policies, as I mentioned from the prior meeting, looking at online learning guidelines, district apps, and it is currently under review by Bebarz because we needed a lot of help with this. The same thing for the policies dealing with electronic communication. Bebarz is reviewing those as in addition, he is reviewing for us the use of electronic communication and recording devices to assist updated regarding distance learning. We also discussed policy five-two-zero-zero, attendance, again, and we're one-zero, as we are preparing for it to go up for a first read following the approval of tonight's policies that are up learning policies, and the administration is continuing to work on and finalize the related grading system and reporting pupil progress regulations. We have a meeting coming up in July. It's July 29th from 6:15 to 7:15 via Google Meet. Are there any questions?
I just noticed you have a lot of policies in reference to the IT department. Wouldn't it be useful if the operations helped you?
I mean, operations can definitely help out. Right now, Bebarz is reviewing
Right, you just have a lot of policies that are in reference to some of the operations. We may already had the answers, so that's all.
Okay, great. So we'll take that suggestion back to the committee. Thank you.
We had two meetings on May 27th at four. We had a Zoom meeting, myself, Mrs. DeCarlo, Mrs. Shields, Mrs. Helberg, and our demographer from statistical forecasting, Richard Grip. We reviewed our demographic study. We talked about different types of things. We can expand on à la carte to get more information. It was pretty robust. Most of the meeting kind of took up him reviewing it. Again, we're not demographers. Gave us a lot of insight. Mrs. DeCarlo's already touched on our parking lot projects. We then met on last Wednesday, actually the 17th, at five via Google Meet, myself, Mrs. DeCarlo, Mrs. Shields, Mrs. Helberg. You know, what they're researching, what they're implementing, what we've already been doing that works and is coincides with CDC. Mrs. DeCarlo touched on our parking lot projects and our gym floors, and then we also talked about looking at facility usage, changes, things of that nature in the new world we live. We did not schedule a new meeting because we are hoping to do one in person in July, so we will be in touch and let everyone know when that will be.
I have an education committee report. We met on June 17th via a Google Meet, myself, Mrs. Mezick, Mrs. Smith, Mr. ... for the library media specialists and the gap curriculum that Mr. Higgins discussed earlier. And then for a large part of our meeting, towards the end, we had a discussion of a year and end, and Mr. Higgins presented the programs and our successes and our challenges throughout the year, and it was a very comprehensive assessment, and it showed how much work has been done in the area of curriculum instruction in the past year, and we really appreciate the realistic realistic literacy and the ELA curriculums are for recommendation from the committee. There's any questions? Okay. All right. If that is all with curriculum reports, I'd like to move on to board, board action. The first section is personnel. We have 34 items, and it goes from page three all the way to page seven. So can I please have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations for personnel items?
So moved.
Mr. Tomassini and Mrs. Shields. This is personnel, so there'll be no discussion. Mrs. DeCarlo, when you're ready, let me know.
I'm ready.
Okay. Can I please, can I please have a roll call? I'm sorry.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordalaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Tomassini?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes. Next on the agenda is HIV. We have none, so we will follow with the education section. We have five items on the agenda. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the education recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Mezick and Mrs. Cordalaru. Is there any board discussion regarding this section of education? If not, can I please have a roll call on the education items, Mrs. DeCarlo?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordalaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Tomassini?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes. Thank you. Next on the agenda, special education. We have seven items. Can I please have a motion to approve the special ed recommendations?
So moved.
Back to you. Mrs. Shields? Thank you. Any board discussion regarding special education?
I was just wondering if we know if these schools are doing virtual ESY?
Sorry, I was on mute there. It is our understanding, yes, that these schools are continuing to do virtual ESY. This is pretty consistent across the state.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Okay. If there's no one else, can I please have a roll call on special education?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Tomassini?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Cordalaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Tomassini?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Thank you. Next up is finance. We have nine items, and it goes all the way to page 15, I believe. Can I please have a motion to approve the finance recommendations?
Second.
And Mr. Tomassini, thank you. Any board discussion regarding?
I'd like to just comment that myself and Mrs. Shields went yesterday and signed off on the vouchers, and that note, they, everything looked great. I would also like, again, to commend Mrs. DeCarlo in the business office. Due to the pandemic, I don't think people realize how much extra work there was for them to provide an enormous amount of refunds from trips, not just even eighth grade cafeteria. You know, it was really a big basket, but again, the ladies were excellent. They walked us through that, that thing I've never even done before, and I've been
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Tomassini?
Yes.
Mrs. Helberg?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Thank you. Next, onto policy. We have four policies for a second read. Can I please have a motion to approve the policy recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
Was that Mrs. Shields? Second?
Yes.
Okay. Board discussion regarding policy? Can I please have a roll call for the policy items?
Or Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordalaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Have something. As you know, I'm the liaison for the Rockaway Township Substance Abuse Alliance, and usually every day they come, that usually come every year, and I have to say, it wasn't what they wanted, but I still thought it was a wonderful event. They opened it up to all of, all Copeland students and parents, so I actually listened in, and even my fifth grader, you know, sat next to me and watched also and got, you know, something out of it. So, you know, good job to the RTSA for still being able to put something together for these kids.
I watched that also. It was, it was a great, very positive.
Yeah, but my one takeaway was David Tyree from the Giants said, "You're going to hear pretty much the same message all morning," and he said, "Because that's an important message." So I took that, made sure my kids remembered that.
Anyone else? Mrs. Mezick?
Yes, I just wanted to report that I had attended Equity in a Pandemic that was sponsored by Elf New Jersey. It was a panel discussion. One of the biggest takeaways is to look at all those programs like future-ready schools, social-emotional learning, sustainable schools, and look at it through an equity lens. So, for example, if you're looking at sustainable schools, you would look beyond school gardens. Are we looking at sustainable relationships, for example? Mental health issues, how we're connecting to family. What is kindness? It's an energy exchange. Let's see here. And that we should be looking to move from slogans to operationalize it and really bring this issue of equity into everything that we're doing. That was pretty much recap of it.
Mrs. Smith?
Parade. We had a lot of information shared with us, and I want to say thank you to the staff for sharing these. In addition, I'd like to congratulate all those students who graduated, whether it was a preschool or moving up from K to one, and those fifth graders moving up to middle school. I heard some really positive things regarding all of these significant events, and, you know, thank you again to everyone whose hard work and effort made this possible. And then regarding the Copeland Middle School graduation, Lisa, I really appreciate you being there in person to represent the board. Thank you to Nancy, Rachel, and Tanya for your meaningful messages. Dr. T and Copeland Middle School Administration for your memorable contributions as well, and congratulations to all the Copeland Middle School graduates.
I'll wait if, okay. I have two things. The first, I want to thank the PTA at Copeland, specifically Mrs. Brzezinski for helping with the parade and putting together such a beautiful display, and it wasn't just Mrs. Brzezinski by herself, but it was her and her many helpers that gathered tents and the balloons, and she had a lot of worker bees behind the scene, and I just wanted to say, as soon as I pulled up, I knew, you know, that the elves were at work, so thank you for that, as well as the administration that came together, team effort with the PTA and the parents. Much appreciated. And we were competing with other districts to showcase our effective programs and practices that are addressed during the challenges of this remote learning. Dr. Tamami and Mr. Higgins and I believe Mrs. Waxman contributed to the actual application and put it together and sent it into New Jersey school boards, and I honestly think we're going to win because we hit it out of the park. So as soon as I saw the application, I knew that we had to get into this because I really do believe that we did a great job, and the team effort was amazing. So wanted to end on that. Is there anybody else that has anything? Okay, okay. With that, I believe we don't Mr. Public, because there's nobody there. Okay. We do need to return to executive session for reason of personnel, and no action will be taken. We'll be there approximately an hour. So can I please have a motion, please, to return to executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Shields requests Mr. Tomcini to come in for a few minutes just before.
Yep, I asked him. Right. Okay, can I have a show of hands? Okay, let it be noted at 8:11, we'll return to executive. Thank you very much.